Like I'm watching stuff. Um. Check check. I'm just trying to just try to go down. Oh, it looks like we it is working. So I went I went into settings on my OBS and I changed it from YouTube's primary and gist server, which is what we always use to YouTube's backup server.
Okay.
I didn't know I could choose the difference.
I just got a notification that you're live too, so.
Okay, good. I'll stop the recording. We'll just be live. Perfect. Good morning.
Okay. Good morning. No, it's Tuesday.
Did you see her long-sits yesterday? Did you see I did a nice long-sitting gauze string yesterday?
Oh, uh, yeah, yeah, I did. So as I got into service.
That's what we're going with? You're out.
Just do your own thing. This phone still. It's mine. That's that's me showing up for you.
I know. Thank you, appreciate that. Yesterday I took a picture with Ranger. Did you see that?
I saw it, it was cute.
Everyone was like, oh, I showed up with a dog. Where are you here? And I was like, oh. Like I've been lied to. I showed up for the doggo. I don't see no doggos. I was like, okay, I'll get him in here, I guess. God. Disappoint. Hi, Big Fresh. Good morning. What's up with you? I know it's not the morning, it's two P M. It's fine. I had a long day yesterday.
Um, well, what I was gonna say earlier is that Patton gets carsick too and he threw up in the car.
Yes, right. Patton. Well, Alexa went camping yesterday. And they took their dogs and one of their dogs gets really carsick.
He threw up twice actually. In the car.
Maybe you should be driving around town with him so he gets over that.
Or I'll just clean up vom every day. In fact, on the way back today, he threw up. I don't know, we made it all the way home.
Give him. Put him in a dog crate when you put him in the car.
So he can sit in his own vomit?
No, just so he like it's like a like a nervous nelly thing, right? So if he's in a safe space, maybe he won't be so anxious.
Maybe.
It's like an anxiety thing, right? It's a thought.
I just thought it was a.
Not so he used to sit in his own vomit just so that like he has a safe haven. Cause otherwise he's like rolling around the car and he's like, bleh, I'm crazy. And then he vomits.
It's true. We were trying to make him lay down, uh, you know, so that he uh would have his center of gravity nice and low and stuff. But today we got home, got out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And um he ran up to the front door to go in the house. Right before he walked through the door, he threw up right on the doormat or like right in front of the doormat.
He's got problems.
But he made it all the way home though almost, you know?
Oh, right, because he didn't park in the car at all today.
It wasn't in the car. And Joel's like he's like, oh no, he threw up. And I was like, but at least we can just spray it off with the hose, you know?
It's true.
And then he trotted into the house, jumped on the couch and threw up on the couch. I'm like, that's even worse. Cause in the car, it's leather. I could just like I could clean it up a lot better than off the couch.
Wow, why'd you let him s- sneak straight in? You should've stopped him.
But we're already home.
You're not backing like candy trusted, candy trusted.
Just crazy. Poor baby.
I'm not accustomed to a dog that's carsick carsick like that. It's funny, little guy. Patton's a cute little um cockadoodoo. He's a cockadoodoo.
And he's a schnoodle.
Oh, he just schnoodled. That's right.
So schnauzer.
We did see these for so long, but I just like couldn't finish the mission. We had like I didn't want to stop in the middle and it's a long mission. And then we tripled up missions and suddenly we were like tripled the time. And then we just getting distracted. I had a really good time. And then like fucking that was like four in the morning, like this other forest, I could see the thieves, people that were streamers all closed down too. So they all ready to be at the same time. I was like, this is overwhelming. I'm exhausted. Like thank you guys so much. Like it was just like that was really cool though. They stuck it out longer. From myself, Cody, I'll stuck it out after I dipped down. I was like, it is five o'clock. I'm going. Like it's been twelve hours. Yes.
Five A M. this morning? Holy cow.
I was like, I'll be I'll I'll be done by three, so I'll start. I'll be up and about by eleven. That's fine. You know, seven hours is fine.
Mm-hmm.
But then I was like, we were in the middle of the mission. We could've and I was like, it's five. I have to go. Sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You're fine. So I left in the middle. Well, not in the middle, but in the middle, we finished two of the like big ones. And then we like there was one more and I was like, I left in the middle of that one. And then I was like, I'm sorry, guys, I can't hang. And then I thought they were closing too, but then they were like, no, we're gonna keep we're gonna stick it out. From convince them to stick it out to finish that last mission.
Hmm.
And then I was like having trouble falling asleep, so I checked my phone on the stream to see where they were at. And they were about to turn it in, so I raced back to my computer and logged in real fast so I could get the credit too. I'm such a bitch. They were like, did that work? Like, did you get it? And I was like, hell, yeah. I totally got the credit. It was it was great.
Okay, sorry. Alright, I'm I'm here. I'm alive. I'm awake.
I think your mind over there.
I'm the bad guy. Okay.
Gotta get myself situated.
Duh.
I'm hanging lazy ass. Hi, R I G. Good morning. That raid was so cool. They were all really cool too. I tweeted them out too. And they were all like, hey, yeah, no problem. Like it was chill watching you. Like you guys have a good time. And I was like yeah, you guys too.
Yeah.
Like they raided it and they raided it and they like all subbed each other. Like they'll give just something to each other. And then they all like kind of dropping videos and shit. And I was just like, I can't handle this time of the morning. I'm too tired.
How random.
It's really cool.
That's when you're gonna find all your best to see if these people is like.
To crew. Yeah, they're on here on my Twitter. And I was like, thanks so much. You guys are awesome.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And a couple of them were like, hell, yeah, like whenever we raid through like that, if if people show interest, then we like make it a party. I was like, damn.
Aww.
Didn't know I showed interest. I was dead tired, but like
Like, oh, hi.
I'm glad I was I'm glad it was okay. It was really, really cool.
I'm already starting to sniffle. I hope my allergies aren't gonna be bad today. I slept out in nature last night.
Barber, I can't.
So I think this is number eight. Is that correct?
I, oh. Thought I already updated. That must not have saved. Yes, it is number eight. That is correct.
It's okay. Sorry, my bad.
My bad.
Why I brought some coffee?
Bring me what I see.
I got this this morning at eleven. I would have been hanging on to it for a while. For you. Sorry again.
I need to put something on.
I'm the bad guy.
Like so, I wanna park bench.
And they're brother.
Yeah, that's what she was up to. We're doing a quick two hours and then we're gonna go to a Pokemon E X raid. And then we're gonna come back maybe and do a quick. We'll see how much we get done. Probably for another two hours though. I'm planning on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You didn't seem super committed, so I don't like promise the.
Who me?
Yeah. Are you done for another two hours later?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm planning to be with you live until eight P M ish.
Okay, okay, just wait, sure. Okay.
That was on my I'm I'm such a planner. Like I have to in my head, I have to know like what I'm gonna do. Otherwise I don't do anything. But that's what my plan is. I'm the bad guy. Man, my freaking back hurts. Oh.
Well, the raid itself won't take longer than like ten minutes. Yeah, but I want like they're right now the raid boss gets out as the Chriselia. And I know they're all gonna like leave the raid to go to other raids. I just wanna hit like one or two of them with them. So like another twenty minutes maybe.
Two minutes, yeah. Totally. Okay. It'll be like a solid thirty minutes at least.
Probably, but if we start at five, we go till six, then we can do stream again from six thirty to like eight thirty.
Yeah, for like let's be back here by six.
Okay, okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Honestly, I think it is too.
What are you doing in there?
Running.
It's like okay, okay. Kenzie suggested that I record forest sounds while I was camping, so we could use it as our study background, but I didn't do it. There's like some wind, some birds, and we're right next to some water. So probably wouldn't have been good, but then I would have had to been completely silent and the dogs not barking and me not making any noise for as long as you know what I mean? For what? For me to record sounds.
Oh, while you're camping, I thought that'd be cool. Be like, oh, camping study stream, camping study session.
Man, I might need an allergy pill. Do you have any?
I'll wake all night tonight. I'll be back in work tomorrow. Oh damn. Oh, okay, cause you wanna set up your like sleep schedule again. Fuck, sorry dude. All my frontal data is Spotify. Hey, that's a winged win right there.
Oh, bad guy.
Oh, what do you want? Allergy pill?
Mm-hmm.
He makes me feel like nobody else.
Nobody else.
I do, I do, I do.
One, don't pick up the phone.
You'll have to kick him out again. Two, three, two, three, two, three. Would you like a cup of coffee?
Uh. What kind of ice do you have?
Kind of ice?
Yeah, do you have an ice maker? Can you help pour over ice for me?
Okay. And in that cup? Okay.
Yeah.
Too late, I turned.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you're gonna wake up by the bed in the morning if you're under him. You ain't getting over him. I got no room to count on.
One, two, three, four.
I got no room to count on. I don't know how much camera you like suck.
Did you just make this fresh?
Yeah.
Oh, what? You ain't getting home. Ooh. So pretty. Oh, a straw. Yeah, fuck the turtles.
You ain't getting over him. I got no room to count on. Ah. Call the ice coffee.
Alright, now this is the grindstone. Yeah, I'm already going. Alright, I just got. Hi Ben, hi Sager. How's it going, you guys?
Sublimation, isn't that the state change of the solid straight to a gas? Or is it the opposite, gas straight to a solid?
I believe so, okay. The other, what's the other one?
Like dry ice?
It goes like, what what's it called? The one that goes straight from solid to gas.
Yeah, so dry ice. I don't I mean, I don't know the word it's called, but that's what dry ice does. Is that not sublimation?
Just.
You sure that's not sublimation?
Like I do those two confused, but I don't think it's I think sublimation.
Is it the opposite direction?
It's like going to solid. Cause like it it like
Okay.
like pick up to me what that word means is like coming back down, sublimation.
Okay, okay.
To like a stable site.
Yes, okay.
Sublime, I don't know if that's.
Then what's the opposite? What's that one word?
Keep your eye out for it, cause that's a thing.
Sublimation is a solid to a gas.
Solid to gas. Wow.
So that is the one.
So the opposite, what I thought. What's the other one called then? The opposite.
I don't know. What's gas to solid? I only thought that it was solid to gas, cause that's the only one I remember. And that's more prevalent than a gas to a solid.
Yeah. Maybe it's just condensation. No, that's liquid to a solid.
Yeah.
I don't know. What's gas to a solid?
Deposition.
Mm, yeah, okay.
It's very rare.
Gas to a solid.
Solid to a gas. Thank you, Sager.
To Google.
So the opposite here is sublime theory.
Okay, that's good to know. It's a memory trick. Just whatever the opposite is that I think that's what I'll choose for the answer.
The opposite.
One, don't pick up the phone.
Desublimation. You can call it desublimation.
Oh, okay.
Or deposition.
I've heard both ways. No, I've heard deposition.
No, I make coffee for Alexa. That's all solitary. Although I've wanted to visit your state for a really long time. Hi there, you guys. So far, so good. We're in the middle of a study session. I just was talking through some of the questions. Um, and we're right now I'm going over entropy and the second law of thermodynamics. Um entropy is a thermodynamic function that increases with the number of energetically equivalent ways to arrange components of a system. And it's just specifying that entropy changes are associated with state changes, which is sublimation and deposition and whatever. So I'm predicting the hot and predicting that the entropy state change is either positive or negative based on um, the state change, the entropy changes as the state changes. Yeah, it's works for it. Science is one of your best subjects. Well, you should be teaching me, Sager. Oh, you know, I could use a tutor. Corey texts me and said, raid? Like, well, yes, I will see you at I see you.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're sure. I think sure. Now what's the relevance of this equation right here? 'Cause this has all been stiff change and entropy and all this and it just says delta s is equal to Q rev over T. And then on here it's like oh eight point two calculating like what was the calculation for?
Is this used right there?
Does this introduce it? I don't know what that no I recognize it it's a problem.
But there are places that would say like pertinent equations like here's the equation we're about to like address it stuff like that so.
That's all I hear. Okay. I guess I was like looking for like an intro on it but now figure how to use it.
Um. No intro just in the practice problem.
Okay, okay. Thron how are you awake Thron stayed up later than me oof. So loud today. My next door neighbors are moving out so.
Upstairs?
No next door the landlords of my house own the same house next door so they're they're working the yard while those guys are moving out.
Um live next door. So they can come and watch her probably.
Oh I don't know if it's part of that or not but
Probably.
Um that's what all the like lawn mowers and stuff are though 'cause they do all their own landscaping which is part of the cool part of living here.
Right, right, right. I just took a practice quiz for cube counting and I almost missed one. Okay.
Here perceptual. Cube counting is that part of the perceptual ability test is counting.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So they give you this like this less like with this one this shape. And they say how many have two of their exposed sides painted how many cubes have four of theirs like the str the way like the method they teach you to do it is first count the total amount of bricks that are there?
Yeah.
And then go through each one and say like how many has an exposed side like so for example this one you can't see that side but you know it's exposed like to the air or whatever.
But painted?
It's just their way of saying
Exposed?
like yeah like whatever you can if it was like a house and you painted it. Like what what would have paint on it?
Okay, okay. You wouldn't paint the ground though or would you?
Yeah you don't paint the under thing or anything inside it's just any like exterior exposed side.
Okay so this one for example has one two three four.
Yeah.
Okay and he only has one.
Right.
And he has one two?
Does he?
Well his backside too.
And then what about?
What do you what well is he a poking out like this would he have a third?
Yeah he has he has three.
Yeah you're just assuming that he's a mirror image?
No I'm I'm looking at it like this block is connected to this block so behind him there's no blocks in the middle.
You'd see it like right here.
Yeah if you were to like turn it you'd be able to see that backside so like
I feel like you could sneak a block in there and you wouldn't be able to see it at this angle.
But that you have to be able to see like look at this one here see how like if if this was a block there wouldn't be that line there that line is indicating that it's an opening. So like there's no block there you have to be able to visualize.
Oof it's like optical illusion bullshit.
Yeah you just have to know what you're looking at so like this one see the block that's underneath this one you can't see any side of it but there's no floating block so that's sitting on something.
Okay.
And normally you wouldn't even it that would that would count.
But you know there's not a row back there so you know there's one below it that has one side.
Yeah.
Love that.
And so even on that one I put right I put on the place where I had it as zero 'cause I just first my first instinct was like he has zero sides. The middle one but then but then later I was like oh I went back and changed it like oh that one actually has a side exposed. So you go through and you write down all the numbers and then it says 'cause they'll ask you two or three questions for each figure. So that's why they suggest doing it this method like do all of the effort upfront so where you have it all listed out and then it's just if you get fast at that at like seeing it then you can
Then you can work through the question yeah yeah.
Oofta you can you could just look through here and be like how many was two say like one two three four okay four how many with four one two three three and then you kind of just go like that you know?
Right, right.
And it'll move.
Yeah that's interesting that's cool. Hey if you guys are just chilling why don't you smash a like on that video huh? This one here debating going to get somewhere or leaving it out.
A little straggler.
Yeah. Oh my god look I thought I was getting continually getting it wrong and then I realized that's one fifty one joules over Kelvin like that's a J right there.
Mm.
I thought it was fifteen hundred eleven and I was like the fuck.
How am I a power of ten off?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just read this question four times.
If I can grab their scissors.
If they're not just sitting on my office desk then they're in the drawers yeah.
All they see is this.
The orange handled one should be really close by there. Just one of those drawers around the table. Yeah apparently YouTube was done we were having trouble starting stream I had to switch to YouTube secondary interest server.
I love your little makeup setup it's cute pretty organized. I did this practice problem and I got it wrong and I disagree with the book and That seems foolish so I'm just going to Double check in my own way See I thought it was C but it says the answer is D so it's trying to tell me that if I fold this thing up That's what's gonna show and I Have to say it to believe it
Why do you not believe it?
Because if I fold this down On one side will be five To its left would be the three and to its right would be the four
So you made it?
Yeah Okay cause look at it Like if you fold that down the five will be there
Did you just turn it upside down though? The four's not gonna be next to the five Oh maybe it will But the one
I'm right I am right
Oh you do hold you did you make the diagram?
Cause look yeah I did okay so if the one's on top and you put it right here Your five is gonna be See now at first I thought it was gonna be that
But they're holding it like this
The one's on top Is it not?
No I I I don't get how they're doing that
The ones on top The five's Here and the four's there
You are correct
Like the hell?
You should Google that and make sure
Like you guys There's no way it's not it's not D cause if if the five is like the three's not there Three's on the other side
Let me just see this
It's like an idiot's
Okay so check this problem out Can the can the camera see this at all?
Yeah it's perfect
Okay good see check this out Take a screenshot Let me know what you think Numbering the parts
That's that is horseshit I am right And I did it for a fact now unfortunately on the actual test I'm not gonna be able to like have a scissor and cut out my little stuff But that's okay
Hopefully you won't have to prove yourself right on the actual test gosh
But that sucks that's wrong Like that's fucking wrong and it says here looking at C and D the only option that matches figure three D What where's figure three D?
Isn't that it?
Where does it say?
Oh 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 what's this next page it's talking about when we fold it up
Figure one figure two figure three Figure three is D
Sequence of folding?
Yeah it's saying okay let's see so we've got the six on the end Top bottom okay so A B it's saying fold up the th- wait why is it doing this? Fold up the three And then fold up The C I guess
Am I looking at that right or they're folding it up inside out?
They are folding it up inside out why would somebody do such a thing?
I watched Donovan's reef the other day and John Wayne Spanx the leading lady and I immediately thought of you Alexa
Yes
Add it to your list of John Wayne spanking movies Oh my god pen He does that a lot
Love that he's such a spanker
Donovan's reef
Like sexy before it was Sexy before Fifty Shades of Grey
But only like behind doors you can't do it on movies anymore or it's Anti feminist
Yeah you know what that's so weird
It's still
Because there's Fifty Shades of Grey but there's also like spouse abuse
As long as it's behind doors and it's like in a sexual setting everyone's cleared the go rules whatever
Well yeah I guess if you fold it inside out like a freak
They folded it inside out to mess it
That doesn't make any sense why would you Who folds a dice inside out? Looking at C and D the only option that matches is D No it doesn't who folds a dice from inside out? Doesn't make any sense okay let me go back and read through like the rules about it except they're like Just know anything you fold is gonna be folding up into the page
That changes the game
That's that well that's the opposite literally of everything okay let me read if it says that though then we'll know
You didn't even read the rules did you son of a bitch
You son of a bitch Well no if if I'm do been doing it wrong this whole time Then no wonder I haven't been getting the score that I want because One out of the six sections I've been getting completely wrong
Oh and perceptual ability
Yeah it's it's forty five questions made up of Or no it's sixty questions made up of fifteen of each section oh that doesn't seem right either
Doesn't matter anyways that makes sense
Anyways it's six sections with equal amount of questions so if I did good on everything else and then I did this wrong
Yeah
That makes that would make sense I suppose that's sort of sad that can't be true though
You were to imagine folding it into a three dimensional figure
Most candidates find this part quite difficult
It says right there that those so those gray parts are the right are the sides
Yeah
Take note that the orientation of the three D figures may vary in each question so you need to be visually sharp
That's like horseshit honestly Cause that I mean that's how I would have done it and that's the right answer
Identifying the significant parts of an unfolded pattern Are is paramount to your preparation usually the base is the largest portion
I even highlighted it right here keep in mind that the direction of the fold should be inward
Oh you already highlighted it It folds inward Like This inward That's literally the only thing
But like upward and inward because I have it like this you know it's like oh it folds inward
Guess not
It folds
Unlearned that right now
Upward and inwards
Get it out
So
Get it out Man
Instead of I barely just got into it
Well you spent twenty minutes bullshitting about your stupid dice game
You know what but that's important though and that's gonna save me a lot of time
It's gonna save you a shit ton of time yeah
So I'm gonna just you know what my back hurts like hell
Okay you want some ibuprofen do you wanna switch chairs?
No my chair is fine I'm just
I sat on that chair yesterday and I thought I'd hate it but it was fine
I I I just wanted to complain I'll be okay
Do you want a pillow?
Plus I fell down in the shower
You fell down in the shower?
Yeah I was getting out of the bathtub
Today this morning?
Yeah and I had my coffee
Oh you took a tub
I took a tub
Okay so it was like all slippery and wet okay
And I wanted to put my cup like on the sink And so I leaned over the edge of the tub like with both hands out like that and in my head I was imagining like This is dumb like I'm gonna fall
You knew
And then I slipped and landed In the tub sideways on my knee like you know when you in the tub and there's like little slanted things for your arms to rest on inside?
I guess yeah
Like you know it's not like the edge of the tub but there's like
Some of them have that yes
My knees fell on that Ouch I was like yikes I knew I was gonna I was like I laughed at myself I was like you're an idiot like I was just thinking how I was gonna fall and it fell like Crazy
YouTube was down earlier I had trouble starting stream but we figured it out
Mmm good
I was like I'm surprised you're awake again I'd be like what like you were live longer than me like I ditched out like I did I did my five hours and I bitched out I did five to five
Five to five what do you mean you did twelve hours
Yeah that's what I meant
It said five okay yeah yeah It's fine
I was like I have to go I have to be up so I can do my study stream like I told myself I needed to get seven hours
Study days
Yeah although today it's kinda interrupted with the poker raid but
We're just gonna have to Make up for it you know
Around that it's fine Also I'm scheduled to study every single day for the next two weeks study streams so
Yeah it's finals like that's what's up Suck it
Anyways
Suck it
It's funny though cause I tweeted like oh I don't I would rather get my study stream done earlier I'll just start sooner
Yeah that was horseshit
Well then I stayed up
I just love saying horseshit
I didn't until five AM I was like just kidding
Yeah
I wanna do my normal time with the poker read in the middle It's gonna yeah anyways One don't piss off the phone you know he's only calling cause he's drunk and alone two
Yeah I knew it was A boom Now that I got this inward outward thing It's good
Okay
That's gonna that might help a little bit I think I don't think it'll be like a game changer honestly but
If you're under him there you go click on go to that Twitter link and that's my schedule for the next two weeks my finals are in A weekend three days
And I'm doing a practice dat on the ninth
I wanna proctor her DAT practice exam here on the ninth It's obviously a practice exam but it's like A very serious practice exam
Well you might wanna stay away actually because it's literally gonna be fi- well four and a half hours of
Don't you have like
Complete silence like I'm not even gonna talk Cause I can't like I'm not gonna I can't talk It's just gonna be exactly how the DAT would be you know like the person on the timer like comes in is like you're done pencils down
Yeah I wasn't gonna sit in here with you
Yeah I I didn't want you to
Oh okay okay I figured I'd like I don't know stream or something
You should be on Twi- you should be on Twitch yeah yeah
I figured I'd be on Twitch but I'll like set myself my timers and then I'll you know okay you're two and a half hours you have a ten minute break
Yeah yeah
And you're gonna be on YouTube just Dat
Yeah
That's what I figured
Unless you wanted to like do your own study thing then I can do that but I needed you to help me so whatever
I um do need to study but um I'll just do some studying um afterwards
Yeah
Yeah that's fine
And I can like Do whatever later too
Do you have live notifications for all the channels you follow?
Yeah I do
Oh I turn off those emails
Oh okay
I get them so many times
Well that's cause you don't wanna watch anybody and I do
Well I do though I just don't you know You like the I don't like getting the emails like pretty much Dre's live every day so like I have an email telling you Dre's live every day
You know I don't use the emails
I'll just
If it just go on my phone and I'm just like oh better
It's like if it's after five PM she's most likely live and she'll be live for the next ten hours so it's fine
True dat Get it it's a little dat humor
Great pun Really firing on all cylinders this morning
Hey Oh man I really don't I'm sorry I don't like that
This coffee?
I don't like sugar free creamer
What's the difference?
It's so bitter to me
Really it tastes the same to me
I must have that special bitter mixture
PTC taste um gene
Like it doesn't taste any different to you
No
But then why do I like Diet Coke?
Gross
I it's I well okay not drinking Diet Coke today regular
Coke and then just putting it randomly around Her stream Alexa's brought her customary Coke that she never drinks it just sits there
I drank that last one last time
Because we bullied you Really oh you ever gonna drink that Coke Alexa and you're like yeah I'm drinking really good No good for a few people the usual suspects I just I got way too many emails over and over and it'd be like hey I don't need five emails a day telling me my girlfriends are all live like I know they're alive I know their schedules like it's fine
I have Corey Dre and you that's it
Well for about a two period you probably didn't get very many emails
Yeah for sure Renee too oh and Mary
Ah I love I I need to turn on her notifications actually no I have her
I think that's it
I have I don't have emails turned on for her but I have my app notifications turned on for her
Oh yeah
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 And I think me too actually because I turned it on because I never catch them when they're live it's always random times
That's the thing
With Dre it's Corey like that like I always know Corey's gonna be live I'll just post pop on her Twitter Same with Dre
Okay so this one is this L shape okay we starting the next one?
We are starting the next one I'm gonna blow my nose
Take much of a break but because of the
We're behind so
Like it's three thirty so I have to
Gotta go gotta go I'm starting it I'm gonna blow my nose and be right back
I'm gonna blow my nose I'm gonna blow it out of the water baby
Start
Oh you just trying to skip out on me? Need help with your dye blocks Oh yeah I've seen Claire
Oh yeah, I've seen Claire. Ah.
Toes are freezing.
Do you have like sticky, do you have like sticky tabs where I can like mark?
I just have sticky notes.
Oh yeah, we, look at this one, you guys. I hear the ice cream man. Did you take that coffee? I would've drank it.
I didn't even know my neighbor had got an ice cream truck and I just heard one.
Did you take that coffee away?
I poured it into mine. Thought you don't want it. Every day I'm guzzling.
Yeah, so I like that cup, that's funny. Sorry, did you want it?
No, 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 by all means. I was gonna drink it, but I don't really like it that much.
My stomach is rumbling.
I'm gonna sit for that.
No thanks.
Really try it, it helps. With rumbling titties. That's the point. Oh, you're gonna slice it into tabs, I see what's the point.
Yeah, so I can go and, you know. I'm so excited to start sitting for the D E T. Not till like September, but... It'll come quick. Hmm.
Oh, the timer descended.
I didn't hear it.
Sorry, my headphones.
Oh, they're in your headphones?
Yeah, it's it's the PC's linked to my headset.
Oh. Cool, I'm making great progress. What about you?
I am doing very good.
Yeah, I'm I was ready to kill it today.
Yeah, well, we don't have to leave for another twenty minutes. Let's just do a quick twenty minute sesh. While we're chittering.
Okay, yeah, I'm in it.
I wish you guys the best of luck. Thank you, SDMI. Best of luck. Thanks, Just a Globe. Music is the shit. What music? Up ninety-nine please with a flake. The flake is very important. What what's a double ninety-nine with a flake? Bits and juice, please. A ninety-nine with a flake bits and juice, please.
That's like a ninety-nine Impala with gold rims and and uh juice means it's it's got NOS. It's really speeding down the street.
You know what? I'm feeling that that explanation. You really worked all the pieces in.
It's reasonable.
What's about the flake part? Like it's it's flake.
The flake is the gold rims.
Oh, gold flakes. Oh, girl. Okay, okay.
Is that right?
I doubt that. I doubt that. It's ice cream.
Ice cream. Pooh. All right, here we go. Keep moving.
Wait, that was a minute break. You got this.
Okay, you you can do that. I'm just dinking around over here. I don't.
With holes punched on it and you have to.
No, but what's different about the final that I don't have on me? Hella.
He makes me feel like nobody else.
Nobody else.
Window pick up the phone. You know he's only calling 'cause he's drunk and alone. Hello, Scott. Welcome. How are you? Stream is choppy for me. It dropped for a second. I'm using YouTube's backup ingestion servers or something. YouTube was down this morning for a couple hours and when I tried to start the stream, I had to try three or four times and it didn't work. So in my OBS settings, you can choose what it just says like YouTube's primary ingest server or backup. And I chose the backup and then it finally worked. So I think it's because we're on the backup server, but it's because the primary wasn't working this morning. I'm sorry. I'm doing really good. Yeah, I am actually feeling super productive today, which is awesome. I am plowing through entropy.
Excuse me.
Bless you or whichever.
Oh, bless you or whichever.
Excuse me. I'm plowing through uh microstate standard Muller entropies.
Yuck!
Reversible and irreversible spontaneous and nonspontaneous reactions in relation to Gibbs free energy and how it relates to Delta H and Delta S.
Yuck!
Not that bad. I'm doing a lot better with this than yesterday. It's buffers. I was also pretty out of it yesterday, but I just I trip up a lot when I'm trying to determine if it's an acid or base. And it's normally pretty straightforward. Oh, if it has an H group or an O H group, but then sometimes they get really tricky in there and. I was also pretty out of it yesterday, so I'm gonna have to review seventeen, but I'm doing great on eighteen right now. Hi, Sean. How's it going? One, pick up the phone. You know he's only calling 'cause he's drunk and alone. Two. Oh, I held up a two. Two! And then you just left me. Let it in. Don't let him in. You'll have to kick him out again. Don't be afraid 'cause you know he's gonna wake up in your bed in the morning. What's the next part? And if you're under him?
Under him, you ain't getting over him.
Uh thanks for the scissor dance.
Ah, scissor me tempers.
Oh, God. So deeper white socks can almost never, Sean.
Want to see my socks?
Damn, wearing.
Birkenstocks.
This green.
Cause I go to college.
And this gray.
Oh, I can't lift my leg. My back hurts too bad.
God, you're broken. Should we have done arm exercises on our break?
This little piggy went to market. We should actually, you know what? When we get back, let's do the back strengthening one.
Yeah, let's do the back stretch.
Cause I really tweaked it. I was lying on a um on a kind of a hill area. And then when I got up, it was like a pivot motion, but it pinched super hard.
Oh, yeah, you went camping. You slipped on the dirt.
Oh, and then I fell in the shower.
God, no wonder your back hurts. Camping always gives me like, I can't, I can't camp. I'm a glamber.
You're a glamber?
I need like a two inch memory foam mattress to sleep on.
Well, I I have a two inch and like self inflating mattress with a spongy, you know, I it wasn't that. It was like the before. Before like dinner time when I was just laying out on this picnic blanket in the dirt. And oh my gosh, let me show you what freaking came.
Just kidding.
On my blanket.
Oh, giant bug!
Isn't that gross?
Look how big that bug is.
It was crawling and I squealed.
It's huge. It's not a million legs. This is a melintipede. It's a made up word. Can you see it? Alexa, can they see it?
Uh, go down a little bit. There you go. Super big.
Sick. He had thirty-seven arms.
So creepers. Yuck!
I have a duet album from YouTube. Ooh, there's some Twitch strings together sometime. Penn's like, you should not wave those scissors around.
Okay, look at that gorgeous tattoo.
Really pretty. Yeah, what is that?
I don't know what it is, but it's that same Russian lady. Like we have to go to Russia.
To get the tattoos we want.
To get like the good one. I've looked up her hashtags and I don't see anyone like in the States. It's like her, a German woman, somebody from the Ukraine, the Ru- Ukraine. Anyways.
The waving of scissors is really stressing you out, Penn. I'm sorry. I literally did it once. Yeah, but then I did it twice. Running with scissors. I like it. Scott's just trying to poke the bear. Stir up the fire. Oh, the bug. That's why Penn doesn't go outside. All right, I understand. That's understandably triggered triggering. Like the scissors. He's like, scissors is the least of my problems. That thing has ten legs.
Seriously? Yeah, man.
Seriously. I agree. It's disgusting. Used to be the name of a game developer who created the postal series of games. Running with scissors. I think I've heard of that.
Sorry, just reading the commentary for myself on the side here.
Make a mixtape. I made a Christmas album on my YouTube. Go look at my YouTube album.
Jesus H, this is why. Don't go out.
You looked big enough to carry a small child away.
Super scary.
You know what? For the next movie night, we should watch Donovan's Reef together. We should have a John Wayne Patreon special series of only John Wayne spanking.
Can I come?
Yes, but I can't do it for the next like four weeks because I promised Drea we would do Princess Leia cosplay themed Star Wars movie nights for the next month.
Ooh, sexy. I like.
Yeah, she's she texted me and she said, can I wear Princess Leia's space bikini?
Yeah.
For my cosplay. And I was like, yes, but I will not be doing that. I will do my hair in a bun and I was like, how about I dress as like old Leia and you dress as like young hot Leia? I still don't know what I'm gonna do officially, but um I was like, I'll wear like a jacket and talk with a raspy voice and put my hair inside buns. And it'll just be like the newest movie. It's fine. But I'm not gonna, I like, I was like, you definitely should wear that.
Love that.
But I will not be doing it. She's got some other cute outfits from like, she's got that white, like beautiful, like winter white dress. Remember she wore that in that um?
Who Leia?
Like one of her signature outfits is that long like cape dress with the like scoop neck. Oh, it's from the very first movie. When she's on the ship and she gets kidnapped. Obi-Wan, you know, they hope. That outfit she's wearing during that little clip. That's a great Leia cosplay. Doesn't always have to be slave girl. Gold bikini. Everybody's like classic remembrance of Leia's her gold bikini.
Yeah.
Well, she was carting around by the slug. Somebody tweeted that too. They were like, why not John the Hut cosplay? And then someone was like, we can make it sexy. And someone was like, what are you talking about? John is thick. He's already sexy. I was like, ugh. I think it was Renee. Like Renee had a part in that thread often.
Oh, Renee.
Oh, Renee.
Starting some drama.
Hope she joins us on her movie night. She would dress up like Harrison Ford while he was frozen in the stone. Wasn't, were his hands up? They were like up like this. He was like, ah, frozen in the stone. She's like, I'll dress up like Harrison Ford. I'll just act blind for half an episode. Cool. I'd love that for her. I wish she'd come with us. That'd be great. Yeah, there's a Christmas album on my YouTube. It's a selection of assorted.
Rockin' around.
It's not an intro, but I was gonna join you there. You haven't seen it yet. It is a selection of assorted Christmas.
Oh, that was the intro for Jingle Bell Rock.
Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingles bell rocks. That's where I went with it.
Oh, come on, you sweet vision.
The Kennesmore's album.
Love that.
Wow, I look so cute with those earrings.
I don't wanna watch that right now. I'm gonna vomit.
You don't like this baby? Look at what we're wearing in this one. Baby, it's cold. I'm wearing like put like men's final pajamas.
No, that's a women's. It's it's one of those like, it looks like a grandpa. Turn that off right now. I am so shy. I can't even believe it's there, but as long as I have to see it, then I don't care. Get out of that.
This is not happening. It's not happening. You you just closed your eyes.
I don't wanna draw on you, but I will.
You look so cute. What are you mad about?
Baby, it's okay.
You'll be okay. Lots you're gonna say to me. Like, babe, it's good. I'm worried you're gonna miss the the princess bikini.
Baby, it's cold.
Different Leia cosplay. You turn that off right now. I'm so shy. Like, what? You recorded and put it on the internet.
I know. It's nuts. It's just nuts.
I really can't say.
Baby, it's cold outside.
Baby, it's cold outside. Wow, we need to close this down in the next like ten minutes. We gotta get to that EX raid.
Yeah.
Almost done with your paper clip hole puncher? Are you just poking holes through paper?
I'm not poking holes. I'm drawing, but I have to get all the levels.
Why don't you just smash a hole through?
Because that's not how I do business.
You're quadrupling the work you're.
No, I'm not. You don't know what I'm about. Like I'm doing it this way so that I can be fully sure.
Listen, I'm gonna do one too with you. Which one are you on?
I'm on number twelve. Okay, here. I'm on number twelve right there.
All right, this guy folds in this way. What is this?
That's the first fold. Of showing the absence of paper.
So it actually folded in like to here?
No, it didn't. It didn't fold in half. It folded the so. Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, like there's the midline. It folded to the midline.
Yeah, okay. And then this guy folded in.
No, up, just up one. Up just one.
That is one.
Yeah, okay.
And then he folded in. To right about here. And then we're gonna put a hole punch. Right through there.
Okay, I have my answer. Final answer.
Oh, I'm almost ready. Hi, Katie. Just want Alexa to her ways the slow way. Oh.
Is that real or fake?
All right, anything like this.
Um, what's your answer? Answer or choice?
Oh, 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 um, let me see here. C.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nailed it.
Nailed it.
If you actually had a hole puncher, you know, but you don't have that on the DAT. You know, you're not even gonna be able to fold it, so I shouldn't even practice like that anyways.
You really shouldn't.
Oh, okay. I mean, okay, I'll just I'll just put it out like this and then do it visually. That's fine.
No worries. Everybody, no worries. Everybody, everybody has, everybody's, you're chilling. It's although, yeah, bummer. You're gonna have to hop in at some point, right? Where's the music at? There's no music here, Kate. We were just singing.
Baby, it's cold.
She asked, where's the music at? So Penn linked her to our Christmas album playlist.
How funny. That's that's funny.
Love that. Thanks, Ben.
You're funny. That's hilarious. You're funny. That's hilarious.
She responded, thanks.
Oh, man.
Where's the music at?
Literally E, bitch.
Get him.
Get him!
If you haven't smashed that like button, please throw it down for me. Thanks.
Yeah, my stomach's growling. I need the support.
How about Chad? Baby, it's cold outside. The answer is no, but it's too bad 'cause I want it. It's pretty creepy. Baby, it's cold outside. Think it's that. The answer is no. They stopped like mowing the lawn.
What do you get for fourteen?
Just look at it for a second here. Sorry, my stomach's growling. Okay. It's D. No, wait. Cause this part in the middle, you know, is this part as well. So it's gonna be that tip for sure, but then also he got folded up again, so it's that tip as well. So it's that tip and that tip, like the third one, I guess. Then I get the second and then he folds out this way. So you know it's definitely the four in the middle. And then this flap is the outlier that brings it.
Brings all the boys to the yard.
Yeah, so it's probably A or I don't know how it would be D. I guess that if that was hole punched there, it would fold over to there, but it wouldn't fold again over to there.
So your final answer is what?
I guess A.
It's A.
Oh, sweet.
I I think at least and I'm.
She'll take this opportunity to wish you luck on your raid. May you catch many shines. Oh, thanks, Penn. So we're not really shiny hunting right now, actually, but I appreciate that. Uh, we're doing an EX raid, but afterwards, actually, actually, you know what? You're right. Cause afterwards, we're gonna swing through and do like a one or two cressey raids. Um, I mean, it'd be cool to get a chrysalis shiny, but I really just don't have any chrysalis. I missed that like whatever month it was last year of chrysalis. So I think it was like December. I mean, we were like, I don't know. I just wasn't Pokemoning that month. So yes, I might do like two or three chrysalia raids depending on the people and like it'd be cool to get a shiny, but I just like wanted chrysalia, so. But thank you for the luck. I hope I catch a shiny as well. That would be insane to like do that chrysalia and shiny chrysalia. Folds down and then he folds in and then he folds in half again. So many unhole punches. There's gonna be, that hole's gonna be there and there twice and then so it's gonna be unfold, so it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm. Agree? This is where it's going.
Yeah, the chunk is gonna be, yeah.
Okay, let's see how we did.
C A D.
C A D.
C A D. And four. C B E. C. B. E E. You should not do it with the papers, cause you're never able to do that on the test.
I know, but I don't have graph paper. Like, should I literally just draw it out and be like this? Like this is what I'll have on the test.
Yeah, you should be practicing that way.
All right. A D B. A D B, number ten. A D C. A D C thirteen. E A B. All right.
We're doing out of fifteen, correct?
All right. Yeah, so these are my six scores so far on just these practice tests. Twelve out of fifteen. I didn't do this one correctly, but this is actually my hardest one, so probably like twenty percent. It's like really shitty.
What is that?
Top front end.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's where it's really hard for me. I just can't seem to visualize that. Angle ranking ninety-three percent or fourteen out of fifteen. Paper fold fourteen out of fifteen. Uh, cube count fourteen out of fifty. Three D folding eleven out of fifteen.
You were folding those all the wrong way the first time, though. What did you go through and realize you need to fold up now?
No, you know what? Though that one that was the example is the only one that they did like that, cause all these ones that have shaded.
Folded down.
They folded the way I had thought they did originally.
How are you supposed to know this way, though?
Cause I didn't get that many wrong. I got most of them right.
Well, I that's what it's like. How did, how are you supposed to have known is the question because
Well, these ones don't. I mean, okay, cause look at this, I guess. I guess it could fold either way and not be a problem because there's no shape on it. So the way I'm doing it and the way that they did it still results in this.
Oh, but it's because the numbers changed it up. Yeah.
Yeah, so like it reversed it for that reason. But then still, there's ones, like I got this one wrong. I I got that one right. I wa- I, it was a matter of like I don't know, cause there was a, I looked at this three white lines section here, but there was, there's another one. When this one folds around to that and that, it also creates that.
So I You wrote guess on it.
Yeah, I wrote guess because I wasn't a hundred percent sure, but I I was like, it's probably that.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? I don't know.
No, I do. I do.
And then three D folding eleven. Oh, I already said that eleven out of fifteen. So I already just know like these three are fine.
At any wise, yeah.
Like I could study them a bunch more and whatever, but like I get, I get the concept super well.
Yeah.
I know how to do them and I do them fairly successfully. Cause ov- over week, over week. So what I need to really focus on is probably like this one. And I did okay on, I actually did okay on aperture, though. So what I need, I like really need to do a lot of like TFE and some more three D folding.
Yeah, three D folding.
Angle ranking, I really like that one. I feel like it's easy. Sometimes they give you an idea of like, oh, this is usually really hard for people or whatever.
All right, I'm gonna take a break from this. Yeah, we need to close right now. Okay, I've got a bunch of garbage. Done? Yeah, I'm done. All right, well, we're out. Excuse you guys. Thank you very much. We'll be back in about an hour and a half-ish. Plan on six for another two hours. Okay?